We're good? All right. All right, gentlemen. Good evening. I'd like to call the order. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Board meeting room at 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Would you all join me in a moment of silence and then afterwards we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Moving to item five. Oh, are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make some revisions to the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to revise the agenda as follows. Remove items seven J and seven K from the agenda.
J and K?
Yes, sir. Add the following items under matters from the work session. Old Cowellens Post Office Rehabilitation Project as item 13A. Beautification Committee reinstatement as item 13B. And Certified Crime Prevention Communities Program Participation as item 13C. And that is my motion, sir.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Dudley. Got a second?
Second, please.
Second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. Ms. McCluster? I don't have any screen.
Okay. Mr. Dalton, I'll take yours verbally.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item six. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tucker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Dalton, I'll get yours verbally.
Ah, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with moving item J and K.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items that we have pulled and added as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
I don't have a...
Mr. Height?
And Mr. Height?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Moving down to item eight, our presentations. All right, gentlemen, we'll move to the front of the board meeting room.
Kaylin, we just got the one tonight.
We have two.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, I can... Yes, sure. You taking the podium away? I could surely use it. Daryl, can you hold this?
Yes, sir.
I can't do two things at one time. Well, good evening. That's pathetic. How about let's try it again, like a preacher says? Good evening. That's what I'm talking about right there. This is part of our job that it's just a privilege of ours to do, and that's recognize special people, special events, anniversaries, birthdays, 100-year-old folks. Tonight, I'm going to ask this group on the back row, I think the Sheriff's Department had to escort them in from the jail, but I'm going to ask them if they would to come forward. This is representation of New Prospect Baptist Church. We're representing, we're recognizing them this evening, and I want you to listen to exactly what we got going on. You get on one side, and Brady gets on the other side. I mean, y'all split it up and go halfway. How about that? Brady, you're getting right here. This gentleman is Brady Willis. He's the pastor, New Prospect Baptist Church. The gentleman on the end is Joshua Cruz, Associate Pastor for New Prospect Baptist Church. They are celebrating, get this, 175 years. Let's give them a hand. You know, you, many times when new restaurants open up, there's lines all the way around the building, and you can't hardly find a parking place, and then that just goes away. This church has been here 175 years. I pulled into the parking lot Sunday morning, and there was no parking places. And that's amazing that they've not only survived, but thrived for many, many years, doing well. They have an early service, contemporary service, and then they have a traditional service. And they just do an absolute wonderful job. So I'm going to do a resolution, well, a recognition from the county. We're going to recognize them. I've got some information from Eric Zier's office from the state, and also Sandy Adams. This is Bob Good's director here in Virginia. I've been working with her the last couple of days. Got with them a couple of months ago, and she has actually drove here to Chatham to deliver information from Bob, where he's going to be honoring this church as well. But I just want to say, this is not the whole church, I can promise you. But anyway, I'm going to read this. This is from the county. Then I'm going to have Eddie Height, he's going to be reading the one from Eric Zier's office from Richmond. And then Robert Tucker will be reading the one from Bob Good's office in DC. Certificate of Recognition, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere congratulations and admiration to the New Prospect Baptist Church as they celebrate its 175-year anniversary on April 28th. Formed in 1849, the church... Any original members here? I'm just wondering. Pre-Civil War, 1849, the church was first called the Baptist Church of Christ at Mount Pleasant. The name was then changed to the New Prospect Baptist Church on May 27th, 1874. For there will always be a new prospect at New Prospect as long as the church will stand. The church is affiliated with the Stanton River Baptist Association, the Baptist General Association of Virginia, and Southern Baptist Convention. New Prospect Baptist Church is a memorial to the faithfulness of God and to those who stepped out in faith many, many years ago. We wish you many more years of growth and blessings as you celebrate your 175th year anniversary. New Prospect Baptist Church, given this 19th day, March 2024. Tim Dudley, Stanton River District Representative, Darrell Dalton, Chairman. And this is from the county. Let's give them a hand on that. I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak, but not quite right yet, okay? Mr. Simpson, the gentleman on the end, he contacted me a while back, and he said, "I've seen you guys," by email. He said, "I've seen you guys get out there and do 100th anniversary of a church and different things. Wonder if you could do this for us?" And I said, "You better know it." So I went to work on it, and just want to thank them so much. And at this time, Eddie Height will be coming. He's going to read something from the state office.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. And I'd also like to congratulate you for being in existence for 175 years. That's absolutely amazing. What's amazing, folks, is y'all have got a bunch of Baptists to agree together for 175 years. I can say that since I'm a Baptist preacher. This is a commendation from delegate Eric Zier, member of the House of Delegates, 51st District. Hereby offers sincerest congratulations to New Prospect Baptist Church of Hurt, Virginia, founded on April 28th, 1849. In recognition of 175 years of faithful service to Christ and community, offered on March 19th, 2024, Delegate Eric Zier.
You get another one? And let me just add, on our Board of Supervisors, we've got two preachers. The first one was Eddie Height, the guy that just spoke. And the gentleman that's coming next is Mr. Robert Tucker. He will be reading the letter from Bob Good at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to try to upstage Mr. Height, because the only thing I can share with you is unless the Lord build a house, they that labor, labor in vain. But Paul encouraged the Corinthian church to continue to be steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord for you, and as much as you know that your labor is not in vain in the Lord. This is from the Congress of the United States, House of Representatives, Washington, DC, 20515. Bob Good is your 5th District Representative. Pastor Brady Willis, New Prospect Baptist Church, 509 Prospect Road, Hurt, Virginia. Dear Pastor Willis, it is an honor to bring my warmest greetings to the entire congregation of New Prospect Baptist Church on this momentous occasion of your 175th anniversary. I commend you for giving 175 years of dedicated service to God and to the community of Hurt. On these occasions, it is good to look back and see the lessons learned, the milestones reached, but most importantly, the souls that have been impacted for eternity. As you remember the past and those who you have led along the way before you, rejoicing in what God has done, I encourage you to look forward to the future and continue your mission to connect people with Jesus Christ and encourage and equip them to share His love with the world. I thank you for your outstanding service and am happy to join with your community as we honor 175 years of sharing the good news of the gospel. May God bless you with many more. Sincerely, Bob Good, Member of Congress.
I'll take it one more time? Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Thank you, Mr. Height. I've got two of these. One will go to the church, and one will be straight to Mr. Brady Willis, the pastor. Bob asked me if I would to at least give the pastor one as well. Let me give you a little bit more detail of what they are doing, other than what you just heard. I have talked to Eric Zier and Bob Good's office, and the Sergeant-at-Arms in Richmond and in Washington, they will be flying a flag in honor of the 175th anniversary of New Prospect Baptist Church. They'll bring that flag down, they'll send it to me in the mail, and then we will be presenting the Virginia State Flag and the National Flag. Let me tell you something, 175 years, I think they absolutely deserve it. Amen? I've got some amens from folks out here tonight. At this time, I have asked a couple gentlemen if they would, if they had something they'd like to say. So I'm going to turn it over to Brady at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Tim. Appreciate the way you've recognized us this evening, and it is by the grace of God that we have existed for 175 years. Many of those years, as you can note from the history of this country and Commonwealth, were difficult, and it's because God has been faithful to us that we have remained steadfast through all the times of trial and tribulation. But we hope that even today, as we stand here before you, and even as I share these words, that we are reflecting our mission statement, which is to share a loving, caring Christ with our community and the world. And we just hope that because we exist in about the most northern point of Pennsylvania County, that this county is somehow a little bit better place because God has placed us there. Thank you so much for honoring us in this way.
Let's give him a hand this evening. All right. At this time, I'll ask Associate Pastor Josh Cruz if he will have a word or two. He preaches too. He can chuck a coin. Here we go.
I would just like to, again, extend our thanks to the county for this kind gesture. We do strive to share the love of Christ with our community, and we do that in many different ways, and we want our community to know that we care, that we're there, and that we want to impact lives for Christ. So hopefully, we will continue to do that another 175 years.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anybody else would like to say something? Mr. Simpson? I mean, it's not many people. You can say something too.
No, don't pertain to taxes. It just don't pertain to taxes. But I've been honored to be the treasurer of our church over 40 years. I started, and we church has been through some difficult times, we've been through some good times, but in all, you know, we're in one main purpose, we have to serve the Lord. And we certainly appreciate the recognition we're getting. I sent Tim an email, and Tim was right on it. I mean, he told me, "Sure, bring it." He said, "Bring a whole busload up here." And, well, I appreciate all of you, and I talked to Darrell. I appreciate the whole board, you know, recognizing us. We thank you.
All right. It's picture time. Anybody else? All right, let's draw it in a little bit. How about that? Come on back, Ken. I ain't, we ain't done yet. I'd like to ask Miss Trinity Ahern and her family, her mom, y'all come on down, please. If any of you watched the news, I think maybe a few weeks ago, you may have saw this young lady on Channel 13. Her name is Trinity Ahern. And Trinity was eating at Lost Trace one day, and noticed a lady kept coughing and was getting progressively worse. And instead of waiting for somebody to call for help, Trinity jumped into action, and she performed the Heimlich maneuver and saved that young lady's life. So we, as Board Supervisors, would like to recognize you tonight. This certificate of excellence. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere appreciation and admiration to you for your outstanding bravery and heroism displayed on January 24th, 2024, as you rushed to provide the Heimlich maneuver to a fellow patron at Lost Trace Magoo's, ultimately saving her life. The courage you displayed during this event is remarkable, and you are the true definition of a local hero. Thank you again for your courageous efforts, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors, given this 19th day of March, 2024, to Trinity Ahern. Signed, Eddie L. Height Jr., Dan Rivers Supervisor, and Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman.
All right. Moving to item nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or land owner of the county at the rested agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and the district, and alter the tone of voice for the record. Nonetheless, further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens should last a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that signs up to speak during said session, which does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit, shall be given speaking priorities at the next board meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. McCluster, have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Brenda Bowman?
Welcome, Ms. Bowman.
Good evening, Chairman Dalton, Board Members, Staff, and Citizens. My name is Brenda Bowman, and I reside in the Chatham-Blairs District. I realize you received an update earlier today about the Route 41 study, but for those who may be hearing this for the first time, I thought I'd provide a little background. I had the privilege of speaking before some of you over a year ago, asking on behalf of over 50 businesses in the Mount Hermon area for your blessing for VDOT's study of Route 41, Franklin Turnpike. At the time I spoke to you, there had been two fatalities within two months on Route 41. Since I last spoke with you, there have been two more fatalities on Route 41. In addition, there was an accident involving a Pennsylvania County school bus at one of the busiest intersections. Thankfully, there were no fatalities, but there were injuries. We want to thank you for your support, and as you heard at the work session today from Mrs. Raxdale, that VDOT has conducted the study and will be presenting their findings, making recommendations, and receiving citizen input on Monday, March 25th, 5:30 PM, at the Mount Hermon Volunteer Fire Department on Route 41. We want to also thank the citizens who took part in the survey as this study began last year. VDOT was very pleased with the number of those who participated in the survey, indicating it was the most they had seen in such studies. We thank Mr. Bowman, who represents the businesses and citizens on most of Route 41, for making this community meeting possible. We encourage citizens and the other supervisors to attend the meeting. VDOT has done a lot of work and has come up with many potential improvements to reduce travel speed, reduce the number of crashes, and provide overall safety for the citizens and those traveling on Route 41. The study included the stretch from Orphan's Road to Hunting Hills Road, just beyond the Mount Hermon Shopping Center. The potential improvements to be considered include traffic signals, flashing speed readers, roundabouts, medians, pedestrian crossings, and bicycle paths. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenda.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Do we have anyone else sign?
Yes, sir. Jim Scares?
Welcome, Mr. Scares.
Good evening. My name is Jim Scares, and I live in the Westover District. I watched this month's Legislative Committee meeting with fascination as one of the board members, in one breath, claimed to be a constitutionalist, and in the very next breath, proposed stripping away the First Amendment rights of every citizen of the county by doing away with the Hearing of the Citizens at the Board of Supervisors meetings. I believe this person does not know the definition of constitutionalist. Before this board does anything rash on this issue, I would like to read a recent court case opinion by the Honorable Thomas T. Cullen, U.S. District Judge. It states as follows. "The court must first consider whether plaintiff's speech was protected. The citizen's expression on public issues rests on the highest wrong of the hierarchy of the First Amendment values in AAACP versus Clayburn Hard Work Company," quoting Carey versus Brown. "Accordingly, speech on matters of public concern merits the core of First Amendment protection, Inquest versus Oregon Department of Agriculture. Plaintiff's speech attempting to highlight defendant's favorite special interest group in the context of a Board of Supervisors meeting was clearly protected speech. Speech on public matters should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that well may include attacks on government and public officials, New York Times versus Sullivan. Public discussion on the qualifications of a government official or his fitness for office is accepted political speech, McIntyre versus Ohio Elections Commission. After all the very essence of free political speech is the right to criticize an existing regime, Castle versus Colonial School District. It follows that defendant's removal of plaintiff for his criticism of the board member's official... for his criticism of the Board members' official actions renders the banning all the more problematic if such speech occupies the core of the protection afforded by the First Amendment, Davidson versus Randall, Rousenall versus Borbar. As this court has previously noted, speech criticizing the local regime on a matter of public concern falls squarely within the ambit of First Amendment protection, Scarborough versus Spredor County School Board. Plaintiff's comments are paradigmatic of protected speech and thus merit the First Amendment's robust protections. In conclusion, for these reasons, defendant Ingram's motion to dismiss will be denied as to the count one, First Amendment violation. Agort date has been set for July 15 and 16. In closing, I would advise-
Thirty seconds remaining.
In closing, I would advise this Board to take the Honorable Thomas T. Cullen's opinion on this ongoing First Amendment lawsuit against one of its members into serious consideration before they make any foolhardy decisions concerning taking away the First Amendment rights of the citizens of this county. You may just find yourselves in court on another First Amendment case violation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scares.
Wayne Robertson.
Is that mic on?
No, we're good.
Can y'all hear it back there? I couldn't hear it. That's the reason I was asking.
Welcome, Mr. Robertson. Could you bring your mic down, make sure we can hear you good, sir?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Yes, sir. You're good. Thank you.
My name is Wayne Robertson. I live in Ken Bowman's district. I'm here to speak again against the construction of a new jail. This is the third time I've been here. I wrote a letter to each of you. Nobody has contacted me at all. I have some ideas that I think we can implement that will save the taxpayers a lot of money. And I don't even know if y'all are thinking about what I'm saying. I don't want to insult you, but you sit there stone-faced and never respond to anything. And it's time to talk about some alternatives to spending all that money to build a new county jail. And I'm calling on somebody to get in touch with me, to talk with me about this. The thing is, is that there are a lot of people who are paying taxes in this county, and it's just too much for them. Now, if you're making multimillion dollars, then maybe paying taxes is not a problem, but for a lot of people, it is a problem. And I have an idea that you really need to reduce this tax rate a lot more than what the paper said that you're planning to do. So I won't take up any more of your time, but I do need to talk to somebody about some ideas that I have that can save the taxpayers a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Wayne.
Vanessa Scares.
Welcome, Ms. Scares.
Testing.
You're good?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes, ma'am.
We can hear you. That's good. Thank you.
My name is Vanessa Scares, and I live in the Westover District. I hope that each and every homeowner in the county has contacted their representative regarding the new property tax rate discussion. If you have not done so, I urge you to call your representative before the end of this week. Board of Supervisors, as you listen to the people that elected you, realize that you have caused much stress by not doing what citizens expected and were even told to expect in this very forum. As you hear how people are stressed out just trying to keep up with the price of gas, groceries, utility bills, and now property taxes, know that none of this would be happening if you had approved the 1% increase citizens expected in an assessment year. You created this stress. You have fallen to the spirit of greed and added new expenses to the budget, and now you want more tax dollars from the citizens. This is unfair. I worked in credit union management for 30 years and answered directly to a Board of Directors. Each year, we prepared a budget using historical data from prior years and projecting the next year's expenses accordingly. You, however, have prepared a budget that depends on increased tax revenue, while at the same time, many citizens are still in a property value appeals process that will not even end until the summer. I have to ask, is this the way you prepare your own household budget? Citizens should receive a 1% tax increase. That's it. No disrespect to the Reverend Tucker, who I believe is on the Finance Committee and helped prepare the budget, but when has the county ever asked citizens to pay more taxes? It just does not happen this way. You set the rate, and the citizens pay. Seems like citizens are told, not asked. Government just takes and takes. Now, I'm sure it would go over really great with your employer if you told them what to pay you. And if you took an increase, it would be called embezzlement, and you'd be put in jail. If you want to have the tax, if you want, you know, if you have to increase it again next year, I think was the concern, at least it would allow time for a possible increase in income for the citizen, and he or she could allocate that towards their property taxes. Who knows, though, in the current economic environment? And add to that that it is-
Thirty seconds remaining.
This is simply not the time for a huge tax increase. In a nutshell, if any member of this Board is willing to vote for a tax rate that does not begin with the number four, you do not deserve the privilege of representing the fine folks of Pennsylvania County. So I ask, who on this Board will be a champion for the citizens and work hard to keep the tax rate in the-
Three minutes is complete.
-47 cent range? Is there even one of you that will do what is right and give the citizens what they were told to expect? Which one of you has a backbone or an ounce of integrity? Time will tell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Fox.
Welcome, Mr. Fox.
Mr. Fox, how you doing? How's that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's good.
Frank Fox, Chatham-Blairs District. Stuart, I am very disappointed. When you came on this county's government last year, the budget process was already underway. But you knew when you got here that they had a 48% increase, that they were doing the assessment over again. You had a year to prepare for this moment. And here we are at this moment, and instead of something near a neutral rate, we're talking about 59 cents. Let's look at what some of the other jurisdictions did, because that was in all the charts that were at the Finance Committee meeting. Let's look at Bedford County. Bedford County decided not to do the assessment over again. They had a 50-cent rate. To have it be neutral, it would have had to been 38 cents. They set it at 41 cents. That was about 11% increase. So without going into the details of the budget, are you telling me that 40% more income is because of 40% more expenses? Because that's just finance. And we talk about the Boards in the past kicking it down the road. There's four members on this Board that voted for the budget last year. There are three new members on the Board, one who has run on a financial background, one who ran on no new taxes, and one who ran on expertise in county government budgets. There's a saying in a song I like called "As Far South As I Can Go." We're not as far south as we can go on this. Okay. And if you talk to people, Pennsylvania County has one of the oldest populations in the West Piedmont District. There are a lot of older citizens on fixed income. I'm one of them. And people are terrified about this rate. I'm being asked about recalls if this goes through. So I went and looked at Code 242 of Virginia just out of curiosity and found out that because of the ultra-low turnout last year, that it only requires 10% of the votes cast in each district-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-to have a recall. So just wanted to give you those numbers. For Mr. Dudley, it would be 212. For Mr. Tucker, it would be 216. For Mr. Ingram, it would be 240. Mr. Height, 240. Mr. Whittle, 222. And Mr. Bowman, 274. Chairman Dalton ran prior with a higher turnout, and that would be 352. Be careful of consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Matthew Wade.
Welcome, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
I apologize for my attire. I had to come straight from work today.
Oh, man. It's okay.
I didn't have to change. But I wanted to rise today to talk to the Board about the Department of Public Safety here in Pennsylvania County. First and foremost, I would like to thank them for the outstanding job that I feel they do. In June of 2022, while on duty, I was unfortunately injured on the job. And in addition to the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department that came to render aid to me that day, the Department of Public Safety also responded because I also, I'm sorry, Matt Wade, Dan River District, Mr. Height, I forgot to say that at the beginning. But because I also volunteer with the local fire department, and the question at the time was whether I was at work or volunteering, the Department of Public Safety came and did everything that they needed to do to make sure that me as a volunteer was covered. I was at work. It was an on-duty accident, so the state picked up the worker's comp. But I do want to congratulate them and thank them for the outstanding service from the chief, chief key, all the way down. They were there at my emergency room, making sure that I had what I needed, and I'm very thankful for that. I'm here today to talk to you to kind of further that. I've been to the Finance Committee meetings where y'all float the budget. I've been to the Fire Rescue Commission meetings. I understand the levels of bureaucracy and how you guys kind of insulate yourself a little bit, but I'm coming to you today because I want to talk to you directly. We started this mission many years ago, totally different Board. I don't think there's anybody on this Board currently that was on the Board when we first started talking about public safety. We started needing something from the county to help with responses, and that's why the Department was stood up. As you know, if you are aware, a lot of our volunteer rescue squads have gone by the wayside because volunteerism has gone by the wayside. It has not gotten better. It's only gotten worse. So we do need our Department of Public Safety, and I ask that you support our Department of Public Safety with the funding request that they have to make sure that the calls are getting covered. And that's with staffing. They need more staffing. The other thing I want to talk about is when I was injured, Squad 3 came from Mount Herman. They dispatched themselves. When they heard the nature of the call, they came running because they had advanced life support. And they gave me advanced life support that day, and it made a difference. I personally feel that the citizens of Pennsylvania County deserve to have a response from the county for every 911 call. We don't need to leave this up to just the volunteers. I'm a volunteer. I appreciate the volunteers. But when you call 911, you want to know someone is coming. And there's some bureaucracy involved-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-where, you know, we have to wait for the primary agency to get toned out, then the backup agency, and then the county's agency will respond. They need to be coming to every call. If the volunteers get it covered, great. They can go back in service. But when I call 911, I want somebody coming to help me and my loved one. And the county has that capability. It needs to be furthered. So I ask that you please support the Public Safety Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Thank you, sir.
David Willis.
Welcome, Mr. Willis.
My name is David Willis from the Tonstall District. And there's a lot to discuss here, and I really don't know. There's a lot to discuss, and a lot of people have said it all. The tax rate is ridiculous. I can't believe that. As far as the tax rate goes, the way I see it, we have a bunch of land in this county. We have a supervisor, we have an administrator that came from North Carolina. We have another Board member that's been associated with investors from out of town. So everything, all our fields and all these, all this land in Pennsylvania County, it don't look like land or fields. To them, it looks like money. That's what they want. And a lot of this money that they want all this tax money for is going, a lot of it, it's not even mentioned, is going to pump wastewater and bring water to this new city that's going in Axton. The people that's building this city in Axton, they said they're going to upbuild pump stations, wastewater pump stations, and upgrade them and all of that. But they're going to pay for it. But in the end, in the contract, in the end, it says, when they're done, Pennsylvania County's going to pay them back for all of that. And I understand that that would be like to help, you know, bring people to the area and stuff like that, give them some kind of incentive to do something like that. But that is a lot of money to pay for all that wastewater being run back and forth and all that with the taxpayers' money, and the taxpayers didn't want it to start with. You know, if it's a low-density development or something like that, maybe we could handle a lower tax rate, or it would not cost as much. But anyway, as far as, oh, and one more thing about the taxes going up like that, and then the fire and rescue being unaccountable, I mean, no accountability to the fire and rescue anymore, it really appalls people to think their tax is going to go up like that, and it's all going to be unaccounted for to people that they had, doing God knows what with. Now, this man asked for fire and rescue stuff, and that is what we need. But it needs to be accounted for. We don't need to give-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-two million dollars to somebody and say, do whatever you want. We expect them to do what's good. They need to be accountable for what the money they get. And we don't need, and like others have said, we don't, people can't stand up that big of an increase at one time. 1% increase, a little bit at a time would help. Nobody can stand 59 cents. That's a lot, especially when people own big farms, own fixed incomes. They're going to lose their-
Three minutes is complete.
-they're going to lose their family farm to high-density development because they can't afford it. I'll thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Willis.
Jane Kendrick.
Welcome, Ms. Kendrick.
Hi, Mr. Dalton. How are you?
I'm doing good. Thank you.
Is that okay?
I think you're good. Just get in it. There you go.
There you go. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Excuse me. I would like to address the citizens of Pennsylvania County tonight regarding a threatened and endangered species in our county. The United States Endangered Species Act identified a threatened species as one that is likely to become endangered within the foreseeable future. Excuse me. An endangered species is one which is in danger of extinction throughout all or a significant portion of its range. In Pennsylvania County, the First Amendment has moved from the threatened list to the endangered list. The First Amendment states, Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech. The same holds true for local officials. The Board of Supervisors met on March 3, 2024, to discuss recommendations brought forth out of the Legislative Committee. The portion of the Board of Supervisors meeting known as the Hearing of the Citizens, which we're in right now, garnered the most discussion and, in my opinion, sent up the most red flags. Citizens were referred to as bad pennies, space cadets, and intrepid. Nearly all supervisors made comments expressing a desire for respect, yet their comments about citizens during that meeting lacked respect for the very citizens they were elected to represent. Citizens' communications with supervisors are limited to phone calls and emails, which oftentimes are not returned. Supervisors and staff- Supervisors and staff have countless conversations, emails, and other communication in open session, excuse me, not in open session, and then come to the county meetings and tell the citizens what is going to happen, what they have decided. That's not the way a representative government is supposed to work. Some comments heard at the meeting were inflammatory. We can police the sign-up sheet? This is not Nazi Germany, people. This is Pennsylvania County, Virginia, United States of America. The language used by some supervisors demonstrated a disdain for the citizens, a desire to control and restrict citizen voices from being heard. Supervisors expressed distaste because they had to listen to the same thing repeatedly by citizens concerned about one issue.
Thirty seconds remaining.
You didn't hear the same thing. You heard different angles from different people. Each citizen brings a unique viewpoint and concern on the same issue. The meetings run long. I am sorry, but this is the position you campaigned for. Instead of being the voice of and for the people, the entire discussion surrounds how the Hearing of the Citizens-
Three minutes is complete.
... setting the board up as opponents to the citizens instead of being players on the same team, which is what we are. This should not be allowed to continue, or our First Amendment right to free speech will be moved from the endangered list to the extinction list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. McCluster. Moving to our public hearings. Rezoning public hearings. Pursuit to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance. The Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues. Zoning map changes in support of the said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all its decisions, regulations be directed to these goals and each be consistent with the environment and the comprehensive plan in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-002, New Testament Baptist Church has petitioned to rezone 0.344 acres located on State Road 740, Iris Lane, in the Westover Election District, from B1 Business District Limited to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned R1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The planning commission recommended by a 6 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff, some reason, closed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I believe Wayne Dishman is here. Oh, okay. He's sitting on the front row. If you have any questions.
I'll open the public hearing at 7:56 in case R-24-002. Any comments or questions pertaining to this case? Mr. Dishman, you have anything, sir?
No, I have, Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Thank you for the time. And I don't have any questions. All I'm saying is, back in early 2000s, I gave about 2 and 1/3 acres of land to New Testament Baptist Church to build a family life center, and they didn't use all of the land, so I asked them if I could get back 75 by 200 feet that joins Lot Number One in the Cross Creek subdivision to zone it back from B1 to R1. And I appreciate a just vote from y'all if you could do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Dishman. All right, at 7:57, I close the public hearing in case R-24-002. The pleasure is going to be yours, Mr. Whittle.
Get in that microphone, too. There you go. We don't hear you much.
Y'all ask everybody else.
That's right.
Case R-24-002, New Testament Baptist Church rezoning from B1 Business District Limited to R1 Residential Suburban District. The planning commission recommended 6 to 0 vote with no opposition, so I say let's go with it.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
If none, we're ready to vote. Ms. McCluster, mine didn't come up.
Is it not showing?
Mine neither.
Mine neither.
Okay. Let's go through it verbally.
All right.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Your land has been rezoned.
Motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Been rezoned. Thank you, Mr. Dishman.
You're welcome to leave.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving to Item 11, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished?
We have none.
All right, our new business?
We have none.
None. Moving to 13, we have some matters from our work session. 13A, we are looking at the repairs at the old Cowens Clerk's Office in jail. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to instruct county staff to review the county's budget related to funding to maintain, rehabilitize the county's historic buildings referenced in tonight's work session, create a project prioritization list, budget, and project timeline, and bring the same back to the board for approval.
Got a motion by Mr. Ingram. Get a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We're ready to vote?
I don't.
Okay.
I got it.
All right, let's see. Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving to 13B, it's reinstating the Beautification Committee. I think that was Mr. Bowman. You have anything, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Motion to instruct staff to take steps to reinstitute the Beautification Committee and report back on the same to the board with specifics.
Got a motion by Mr. Bowman. A second. Second by Mr. Whittle. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote, gentlemen.
Okay. Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to 13C, we got the certify for the crime prevention in communities.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution of the participation for the county sheriff to participate in the Certified Crime Prevention Community Program.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Tucker, second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
If none, we're ready to vote.
Looks like it's going to have to be verbal.
Mr. Bowman? Oh, he's come up.
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Moving to Item 14, got a board member reports. Mr. Height, would you like to start with us? Do you have anything to say tonight, sir?
Believe it or not, no.
I can't believe it. All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to say good meeting, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all of the citizens for coming out tonight and showing up and also voicing your concerns, and this is how democracy works, that you actually come out and have your say. Also, I want to thank the staff for doing a lot of work behind the scenes to make all of us sitting up here look good, so thank you so very much. It's time to go home.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Dudley, you have any comments?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Had a good meeting today, a good, good, long afternoon and evening. Appreciate everybody's time to come out and do our work for the citizens that we went to bat for. So thank the citizens for coming out. Also want to thank the staff for the good job that they did, and also want to give a shout out to my daddy. He celebrated his 91st birthday yesterday, and he is a veteran. He was in during the Korean War, so I salute him this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Ingram, you have anything, sir?
Chairman, I do. Thank you, sir. I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't know or hasn't been affected by cancer. And April 13, my dear friend Karen Johnston, whose brainchild was the Bridge-to-Bridge fundraiser, the walk-run, which all the proceeds goes to Danville, Pennsylvania, cancer. So if you walk or if you run or interested, please go on the website and sign up. This is a wonderful fundraiser, and I think collectively she's almost at a million dollars as far as raising money, so it's a tremendous event. And we won't see you until after Easter, so I hope you have a great Easter. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Bowman?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I want to take Mr. Height's time there. So a few things here. Of course, y'all have heard it. Remind the citizens of the community meeting on Monday, March 25, at 5:30 at the Mount Herman Volunteer Fire Department for the VDOT study and the update on the Route 41 Franklin Turnpike Study. Also, I attended the Blair's Volunteer Fire Department Awards Banquet on March 9, and congratulations to Chief Dean Fowler and to all those who received awards that evening, to all of our volunteer firefighters for the great work you do for our community, and I see some of you sitting back there in the back. Attended the Regional Industrial Facility Authority meeting on March 11, attended Chatham Town Council meeting on March 11. Attended a presentation by Caesars Virginia on March 13 to learn about their philanthropy program and the volunteer opportunities for our region. And I wish that had gotten out, the word had gotten out a little bit earlier because they are willing to partner with a lot of the nonprofits, and they have some great programs. So if you're part of a nonprofit or know someone, please get in touch with those folks because they'd like to talk to you. Will be attending God's Pit Crew Annual Banquet this Saturday, and thank you to Randy Johnson and all his volunteers who give so much of their time and goods to those affected by the disasters throughout the U.S. and beyond. They're, as a matter of fact, on their way out to Ohio because of the tornadoes. Attended the West Piedmont Planning District meeting in Martinsville on February 22. Talked to the director, the new director at West Piedmont, and the planning director there, and I'm going to be meeting with them. It looks like they will be able to help us in updating our comprehensive plan. Not sure what the cost is, but it's nice to have some assistance locally, and those folks, they've been doing it for a long time, so hopefully we can get them on board with doing the comp plan. I hosted a meeting with the appointees of the Chatham-Blair's District to learn about what they're doing on their respective boards. Understand that was a first to pull those folks together, so I appreciate them taking the time out on a Saturday morning. I planned for an hour. I went to Bottom Donuts. We stayed two and a half hours. So that works. So if anybody needs a, you know, a plan, an agenda on how to do that, just let me know. I'll be glad to help you with it. Also toured the industrial development parks, including the Megapark with Matt Rowe and Mr. Whittle here. We took about four hours on a particular afternoon and went around and saw the parks, and Matt did a great job explaining what the plans were for those, not only in the mega site, but also in Pennsylvania County. And lastly, I attended the GIS training hosted by Mr. Guidry here with the county staff, and the citizens were invited to that. And if you did not attend, I think you can go online and check that out, but it's great information, especially for those that want to look up properties. You can actually zoom in on your locations. You can see how it looks. You can check out property lines. There's so much data, it's unbelievable. So you can actually get on there and just kind of, you know, click on buttons, tap them, see what comes up, and you can't hurt it, you can't break it. But if you've got any questions, call Mr. Guidry there at the county admin office, and he'll be glad to walk you through that. And that's all I've got. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight. Great responses. Wayne, give me a call. I apologize if I haven't met with you on this. I'd certainly like to talk to you about that. Happy Easter to everybody. Be safe out there, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Whittle?
Please don't put me behind him again.
Settle down, over.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, and I want to just thank the staff for what they do for us all the time. They're up here taking care of us, do the best they can to take care of me anyway, so... But I do appreciate everybody coming out and everybody's input, so thank you. Y'all have a great day and great Easter.
Look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd like to echo some of the same comments from my colleagues. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Great audience. Appreciate all your comments. Want to thank all our staff for everything they do for us. Had great presentations tonight. Mr. Dudley's district had church recognized for 175 years. Wonderful. The young lady, Mr. Height's district, that saved somebody's life. I mean, that's just wonderful. Wonderful. I did have a chance to attend the Blair's banquet. Wonderful, wonderful banquet. Great bunch of people there. Also, this past Saturday night, I attended the Grutner fundraiser. They're an awesome bunch of people also. I mean, all our fire and rescue, you can't say enough good things about them, but I appreciate that. Appreciate everything we've done. We had a good meeting tonight. And with that, I hope everybody has a safe trip home, and thank you all for coming out. Mr. Terrell?
Do you have anything, sir?
Real quickly, Earth Day is April 27, and we're going to have some speakers and have folks going out. I think we have a tipping fee waiver that day. That's going to kick off what I hope to be an ongoing process of beautification of the county. We talked about the Beautification Committee, and that will connect with that, so it won't be a one-time event. The vision is that we'll really combine all of our stakeholders, VDOT volunteers, schools, including education in the schools, staff, county and town staff, in conjunction, adopt the highway folks, to really get on top of the litter situation and work on beautification of this wonderfully beautiful county. So that will be the kickoff day for what I hope to be an ongoing process. Finally, I'm listening to your comments about the budget, and it's a budget that I want you to call me if you have questions. I'm happy to go over it. And any board members, call me, and I'm welcome, I welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Any comments, Mr. Hunt?
Let's go home and watch basketball.
UVA.
Thank you, sir.
Playing in.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.